I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Roll call Sylvia.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
Council President Grant.
Here.
Counselor Henderson, I believe, is delayed as is Counselor Butterfield. Counselor Folsom.
Here.
Counselor Langer.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia. We have three items on our consent agenda this evening.
I'll move consent. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you counsel. We have two groups of presentations today. First, our fantastic police chief Jeff Growth is going to swear in some officers.
Thank you Mayor. Captain Hanlon and Sergeant Shields, why don't you guys come up front here? Counsel, you have brief biographies on your table in front of you. I won't go through those, but just to kind of give you an idea of these two gentlemen. So, we're going to start a new tradition and these are, no stand up. These are just a couple of quick promotions we'll go through tonight and then this will be, as I said, a new tradition. We'll swear in before counsel.
Great.
Right there. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Oregon.
The State of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances.
The laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Sherwood.
The City of Sherwood.
And the rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
Of the City of Sherwood Police Department.
The City of Sherwood Police Department.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge of the duties.
Discharge of the duties.
Of the Office of.
The Office of.
Police.
Sergeant.
Police.
Captain.
Very good. During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
To the best of my abilities so I may go.
To the best of my abilities so I may go.
Congratulations Senator.
Chief, you want to say a couple of things about each of these fine officers briefly on their bios since you.
Sure.
So folks know.
Trying to keep it short and sweet, but.
I know.
So Captain Ty Hanlon, I'll start with him. He's the top name on your sheet there. He's been a police officer since 1995. He worked with the Beaverton Police Department, which is where we stole him or where he came to us from. We hired him as a sergeant in 2009 and he was promoted in June of this year to the rank of captain. And he and his family reside in Sherwood. Sergeant John Shields began his police career in 1999, also with Beaverton. He joined the City of Sherwood Police Department in 2008 as a police officer and was promoted April of this year to the rank of sergeant. So both of them obviously new members to our leadership team, but well deserved and very, very quality folk. So we're glad to have them on.
Here, here. Thanks a lot Chief. Congratulations. Another, there's never a bad council meeting when we can recognize officers or youth in our community and we get to do both. And now is the time to recognize some outstanding young adults in the City of Sherwood. We annually recognize students in the high school that achieve a perfect 4.0 in their grades in the prior year, as well as any individuals or teams that win a state championship or a title in something such as a sport or in the arts, band. So we have a lot of wonderful, wonderful young adults to recognize. And with the summer vacations and stuff, we're never able to do them all in person, but we're thrilled with the ones we have here tonight and we'll read off all of their names. And if you're here, please come forward. The counselors are all going to come in front of the dais so we can shake your hands and recognize you for an outstanding achievement in just truly performing to the highest level last year. And you make us and the entire community proud. Anything counselors like to add before we bring them all up? Okay, so we're going to go around. And new city manager Joe Gall is being put to the test and he's going to announce the names as well as their achievement.
I think this is a test actually. So I do apologize if I get anyone's pronunciation wrong. I will do my best. So the first person we want to honor tonight for two achievements is Samantha Olazuski.
Olazeski.
Olazeski. She did really well. She, and if you've been watching the Olympics and swimming, she placed first in the state in the 200-yard girls freestyle relay at the state championships and also achieved a 4.0 GPA. So I don't know if she's here or not, but.
She's about 12.
Goodness, so that's that. Another student with two recognitions tonight and another swimmer, Julia Bush, also placed first in the 200-yard girls freestyle relay at the state championships and also has a 4.0. So is Julia here? On vacation. Strike two. All right. Another swimmer, Haley Brunel, first in the state in the 200-yard girls freestyle relay. And last but certainly not least, the fourth member of the relay team, Emily Stevens.
Congratulations.
Very good.
That's what parents are for.
Is Jake Fuchs here? Jake, why don't you come on up? He placed first in state in the 5A Tuba solo music competition. So congratulations.
That was your second year doing that, right? Because that is.
Where's the tuba? That's what I don't know. Next meeting, right? Where's the tuba? Okay. Now I have a stack. Everyone else that I have here all, and this is quite amazing actually, all achieved 4.0s this past year. So Makala Bailey, Taylor Bonowitz, Nicholas Carroll, Bailey Hutchinson, Jonathan Kopp, Rihanna Merriman, Arden Robinett, Mackenzie Stevens, Amy Vanderzandt, Lauren Vasquez, Jonah Angus, Jacob Brooks, Colin Christensen, Devin Donahue, Emily Hewitt, Lauren Horner, Hannah Huntington, Jessica Embry, Annika Jordan. 4.0. Bryce Keicher, Jessica Costa, Gabriel Morrie, Lydia Ing, Amy Otis, Keatley Pill, Talia Gabriella Fisher. Bryce Keicher, Jessica Costa, Gabriel Morrie, Lydia Ing, Amy Otis, Keatley Pill, Talia Stashen, Tanner Varren, Brianna White, Thomas Admenson, Sidney Blumquist, Alexander Castaneda, Josiah Ing, Shaylin Farr, Jacob Reimer, Rachel Robella, Robelli, Kes Rooney, Cambria Rooney, Avery Rosenbaum, Scott Skirdell. What do you think?
How Tan?
How Tan?
How.
Is that correct though?
Yeah.
Taryn Denny, Jeffrey Das, Michael Daigle, sorry, Marissa Downing, Guinevere Duncan, Megan Durica, Molly Fetig, Madison Ferriido, that's probably not right, Ariel Flack, Kylie
Congratulations. Come on for your mom. I think mom wants to fight. There you go.
Marissa Lalatin, Tamea McNeely, Melissa Measles, Makala Milne, Taylor Monroe, James Knapp, Samantha Palladino, Delaney Riggins, Sagar Singh, Derek Snyder, Madison Stevens, Brett Stotterd, Brian Swihart, McKenna Troyer, Emma Vancourt, Griffin Weinsek, and Benjamin Windtime. It's quite the stack. So for the students and families, we have cookies and punch if you would like in the hall. And great to see Sue Hecker, one of our great school board members here this evening as well. Great job. And we'll be sure to, for those that weren't able to be here tonight, we will get the students all of their certificates in the next week or so. Giving the families just a minute to walk out to the reception. Next on our agenda is citizen comments, an opportunity to address counsel on any issue that is not on our agenda this evening. If you would like to give comments, please fill out a form in the back of the room and bring it up with you, or you can do it afterwards. First, our clause.
Procedure, question, Robert James Claus, two 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 on South Pacific Highway. Sign code hearing opened, public comment.
The public, the hearing was opened and closed at the prior council meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'd like, please put in the city council packet and courtesy, I'm going to give you a copy of that. And I want this put in record.
So this is for the record of this, I understand that. This is the record for citizen comment?
Yes.
And this is for the record for citizen comment as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Recently in Wall Street Journal, they quoted a colleague of mine, Alan Weinstein, Marshall College of Law. They commented one of the things that's unique about Oregon is the ethics committee. I put a copy of what your, Mr. Matt Langer's so-called economic interests are. I think they'll speak for themselves. We've also added a number of LMCs in the process of trying to get to Delaware Corporation. What was interesting in your IRS tax ruling, you commented you'd ceased farming and you were now a developer. I assume since it's a sworn court document, you know what it means. With benefit of this board, I will tell you there are two things you have.
Sorry. I'm going to cut you off at the advice of counsel. So if you have anything else you'd like to say?
The reason is, is because, Mr. Claus, when you sign up for comments, one of the rules is that you don't make personal attacks. It was beginning to sound a little bit like a personal attack against Counselor Langer. If you have something that you want to submit into the record concerning issues you have with Mr. Langer's, then you might want to do that in writing, but you're not going to be doing it orally. Well, Mr. Elder, that's not a personal attack when you enter something in the record and you make a comment of the tax court. Now hold it a minute. You're now getting into content regulation. No, he's not. He's, he, I am the presiding officer. Content regulation, I want to hear it. Is that what you're regulating?
He's regulating how you communicate it.
Question, and you can be. Let's put it this way. Mr. Claus, when you sign up for public testimony, you agree to abide by the rules. No, I don't agree to abide by the rules. All right, well then you don't have to testify. But what the law says, and there's a difference. Are you regulating content? I'm not regulating anything. Well then what are you doing? Because you. I'm telling you that they don't, they can shut off your public comment because you are not abiding by the rules. The presiding officer, who is the mayor, has the authority to say that you are then disturbing the proceedings of the city council. And I'll make this comment, this is nothing but a hit back because you're bar complacent and you full well know, Elder.
So you are dismissed?
Well, let's put it this way, Mr. Claus. Your bar complaint was never upheld, so we don't have to worry about that.
For failing to listen to my direction. No, you're finished for the day. If you have anything else you'd like to submit in writing, you're certainly welcome to do it anytime.
I can't hear you, I have to speak up.
You are finished with citizen comments for the day. If you'd like to deliver anything else in writing, you can do that anytime.
You've just perfected the point and you're going to get named personally, as well as you.
You're nothing if not consistent.
You've entered admission policy vote that I got good.
Anyone else like to give a citizen comment? Hearing none, we will move on to new business. Two items under new business today. First is Resolution 2012-039, approving one or more borrowings to refinance outstanding city borrowings and the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Sherwood, committing the agency to provide tax increment revenues to pay debt service on any portion of the borrowings that refinances urban renewal projects. Craig.
Thank you. We were looking at our loans, as we constantly do, and we found a couple this summer that are good candidates to be refinanced in this low rate environment. And we are working on that. This resolution in front of you authorizes the city manager and me to go ahead and proceed with that refinancing, to put it out to bid, and if the bids come back, the way we think that they will, that it makes a financially feasible refinancing, then you're authorizing us to go ahead and complete the transaction. So that's what this is about. It also includes an authorization to go into an agreement with the Urban Renewal Agency whereby the Urban Renewal Agency commits to paying the debt service on behalf of the city. The city is only involved because we're using our full faith and credit in order to get a better rate. So that's what we have.
Fantastic Craig, it's always important to take advantage of the markets to save community resources whenever possible. And so I'm very appreciative of this effort. As part of this work, we'll also be looking to potentially at our bond rating. Is that true?
Yes, we will have a bond rating with our, with our rating agency. They'll do an interview. And we've addressed, we're in a better financial shape now than we were and I'm optimistic that we could get it increased.
Outstanding. Great. Any other questions for Craig on the proposed resolution?
I have one Mayor.
Yes.
What is the cost, for the citizens' sake as well as mine, what is the cost to refinance loans of this type? We're saving about 42.7 annually, I think you said, 42.7 annually, so $470,000 over the 11-year life of the loan.
Yes.
But there's obviously a cost associated with that.
That savings includes the cost of the borrowing.
So it's a net?
It's a net, yes.
That's great. Thank you for doing that research.
Yeah.
Thank you counsel. Any other comments or questions for Craig? Okay, comments on the resolution from counsel? Discussion?
I move we adopt Resolution 2012-039.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving Resolution 2012-039, approving one or more borrowings to refinance outstanding city borrowings and the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Sherwood, committing the agency to provide tax increment revenues to pay debt service on any portion of the borrowings that refinances urban renewal projects? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you counsel. Thank you Craig. Second item under new business is Resolution 2012-040, calling for an election and approving a ballot title to authorize the Sherwood City Council to hold a public hearing at a later date to consider annexations of all or part of the Tonkin Employment Area. Hi Julia.
Hello, good evening, thank you. This resolution would call for an election and approve a ballot title. Essentially, as you know, the city charter requires a vote of the citizens of, or the registered voters in the City of Sherwood prior to an annexation taking effect. However, that can take quite a bit of time because of the notice requirements for a public hearing and then the lead time for an election. And that adds a lot of uncertainty for potential developers because they don't know whether or not the annexation is going to pass and so they don't know if they want to invest the time in considering a piece of property, if they don't know if it's even going to be annexed. So what this resolution would do is essentially answer the vote question upfront. Someone would still have to go through the public hearing process with the city council, have all the required findings made, and the city council would still ultimately have to decide on an annexation. But you've got the city vote hopefully answered upfront so that you don't then have to add that on to the time and the uncertainty for an annexation.
Great. Questions for Julia? Appreciate your initiative to take this approach. The Tonkin Employment Area is certainly important for our community and for increasing our overall tax base and the balance of residential versus jobs. So, thank you very much. Questions or comments from counsel on the proposed resolution? Discussion? Motion? I'll move we adopt Resolution 2012-040.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving Resolution 012-040, calling for an election and approving a ballot title to authorize the Sherwood City Council to hold a public hearing at a later date to consider annexation of all or part of the Tonkin Employment Area? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you counsel. Thank you Julia. Moving on to public hearings, we have two public hearings on our agenda. The first is Ordnance 2012-009, admitting the sign code section of the Sherwood Zoning Community Development Code 16.102. It has been continued from the July 17 city council meeting, which we had opened and closed the public hearing. And counsel gave preliminary direction to staff to select a few options that were presented and feedback from testimony we received. And it's back before us. Welcome Brad.
As you're aware, we had a work session on July 31 regarding the sign code. And within that work session and then subsequent. that work session and then subsequent, within this packet that's before you tonight, there were five changes or six changes that were put before you. We changed the size of portable signs to read from three square feet to eighteen inches by twenty-four inches. That would be on page five of sixteen of Exhibit A2. I'll read out of Exhibit A2 because that shows what we've changed. There was a change on page nine of sixteen. It was a Schrader's error, which basically said, "No banner signed shall," and it's been changed to "No banner signed shall be," as opposed to the past tense form of the word. Moving on to page twelve of sixteen, this was the language proposed by Mr. Jagel of the St. Paul's Lutheran Church, and we amended his language to say from the edge, from the curb or edge of pavement, we think that gives them more latitude and flexibility. However, they still wouldn't be able to put a banner sign within the right way under our, under this code, because they would be required to put it, attach it to a building. We did not take, we did not add that a banner sign could be added to a fence or wall, it's just to the building. I talked to Mr. Jagel about it, and, you know, he feels like he's in the same conundrum that they've been in for a while, and he said he would go back to his group of folks and talk about what they thought their resolution might be. On page fourteen of sixteen, we amended, under fourteen, subsection three, amended that language to say that properties owned institutional and public may place one portable sign, meaning the dimensional standards.
Could you speak closer to the microphone, please? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Properties owned institutional and public may place one portable sign every fifty feet for the length of the site's frontage along a public street. On page fifteen of sixteen, a change was made. Again, that was the same language that Mr. Jagel had proposed, and we changed it to reflect the language that we had proposed earlier. And that is what we've done, and also at the work session, we talked to you about an outreach to the businesses should you decide to move forward with this amendment, and I put together a very rough draft of a brochure that we would hand out to the businesses in addition to go out, going out and speaking to each one of the businesses. I'll give it to Sylvia, and you're welcome to look at it at your leisure. Right. And finally, I'm sorry, one more thing. I spoke to our, the city attorney about changes they would make to the code that might make it clearer, and one of the proposals that he added or he recommended is that we would put the definitions at oh-one-five, so it would be renumbering that section 16100 to separate out the definitions and make it its own section, so it would become oh-one-five as opposed to oh-one-oh, and then being wrapped up into there, become oh-one-oh would still be the general regulations, and then oh-one-five would become the definitions.
Okay. So can I ask for a clarification real quick, because I heard you testify to something. Looking at page fifteen and sixteen, section sixteen-one-two-oh-five-oh, section five, I believe that says that if, with Mr. Jagel's testimony, that temporary, a banner or temporary sign may be displayed on a fence or wall at fifty feet or more. So that wouldn't require it to be on the building, and I thought you said earlier that they would only be allowed to put it on a building in that particular case.
You're correct. I, I'm sorry. I did miss that, but I did talk to him, because you had recommended in our work session that it not be allowed on a fence or wall, so I guess it would be up to you if you wanted to strike that from this language or not.
Anything else, Brad?
No, sir.
Anything else, Tom? Questions of Brad from counsel?
I have one.
Yes, Counselor?
Thank you so much for your work. I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for their work and counsel for all the reading and talking we've done about this, but at the end of the day, this is incredibly complex and hard, and if we have done something that we see an effect that we didn't expect, will it be possible for us to come back and amend this code?
Absolutely. You can amend the code any time.
Tom will mention that there is a 21-day notice period, as well as usually unless there's an emergency ordinance, there's a 30-day period after changes are implemented before they go into effect. So there is a little bit of a timeframe before you can just do things, but certainly can be changed with those criteria in mind.
Right. Perfect. Any other questions or comments?
I certainly appreciate the hard work that Brad has done, and the Planning Commission and the business community, and when you start to finish, this was a very long project, a year or give or take, and that's significant. I really appreciate the, not just the initial conversations that everyone had with different groups, but ongoing conversations, and that was some feedback we received from multiple individuals and groups last month. Any debate amongst from counselors? There's a request from staff, and Tom, if I'm clear, to, as part of the recommended language from, in our packet today, is to adjust the location of definitions in this chapter. Is that correct?
Correct. That came from the city attorney's recommendation, just for clarification, it would.
Do we need to do anything as a council to make that so it is, again, easier for the community? To read, do we need to make a motion to amend?
That would probably be the most appropriate thing to do, yeah, just to, to move to amend the proposal in front of the council to reflect the recommendation from the city attorney's office so that the definitions for the sign code are placed at the beginning of the chapter.
That is my motion to amend proposed ordinance 2012-009. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Does everybody understand the motion?
Makes sense.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor of the motion to amend ordinance 2012-009, amending the Sign Code section of the Sherwood Zoning and Community Development Code to reflect Paul's statement, to put definitions at the beginning of the chapter, essentially.
So, yeah, to ensure clarity and ease of, ease of use.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an amended ordinance. Any discussion on the amended ordinance or a motion to read, caption, and adopt?
I'll move to read, caption, adopt ordinance 2012-09 as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So.
So, Counsel and Mr. Mayor, it's a little clear, it's not clear from staff. There's no, the movement of the definitions, you got that recommendation from Chris Crane.
Correct.
Okay. And there's, so there's no, there's no language change. All we're doing is basically move, we're basically moving existing language to the beginning.
And it's not even moving it, it keeps it in the same location if you look at, there's just there. If you go to page one of sixteen on Exhibit A2, we have 16100, which is oh-one-oh common regulations, and right now the definitions are within common regulations. They are actually begin at I definitions, so they would go to, they would have their own title, 16.100, sign-related definitions, oh-one-five, and then you would have oh-two-oh would be prohibited signs and oh-three-oh. So it's just, it's just adding.
Just so that it's clear for the council, so that we understand exactly what's going on.
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Brad. And before you read anything, Sylvia, I'm going to pause.
We're just trying to make it clear that you're amending Exhibit A2, which is the version that's before you tonight.
Paul, is there any reason for not thinking that that's clear?
It's clear to me.
Right.
I assume it's clear to everyone else.
Sylvia.
As long as it's clear to the counselor. It's you guys who are adopting it, so.
I see head nods up and down the line, so it's clear to the council.
Orderance 2012-009, an ordinance amending the Sign Code section of the Sherwood Zoning and Community Development Code, section 16.102. Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Langer?
Aye.
Counselor Butterfield?
Aye.
Counselor Folsom?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Counselor President Grant?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you. Next is a public hearing on ordinance 2012-001. Sylvia, read for the record.
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing on ordinance, sorry, lost my place.
You're fine.
2012-011, an ordinance amending section of the Zoning and Community Development Code, including divisions two and four relating to commercial, industrial, and institutional and public uses, use classifications. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to submit testimony on the above said item. The order of business the council will follow is to hear a staff report, receive public testimony, additional comments from staff, and then questions from the council. The hearing will then be closed, and no further testimony will be received. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded. Please limit your testimony to four minutes.
Thank you, Sylvia. Hi, Brad.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
So explain what we have before us.
So before you, if you go to page ninety-six of your packet, this is the Planning Commission's recommendation of staff report, and the Planning Commission made this recommendation to you on June 12th of this year, after almost a year and a half of deliberating themselves, several work sessions, public open house on two different occasions, and a work session with yourselves after their recommendation was made to you. This particular recommendation is intended to simplify our code. Currently, it, what it would do, it would be consolidating three industrial chapters into a single chapter. It would consolidate four commercial zoning chapters into a single chapter. There would still be, for example, industrial, there would be a light industrial, employment industrial, and general industrial, but they would all be looked at under one chapter, the industrial chapter. The same would go for the commercial zones. It would clarify the use classifications within each zone. This also applies to public and institutional zones, and what it does is it tries to make the nomenclature across the board for each use type the same throughout the code, so it's not vague or unclear as to whether something is permitted outright in one zone named. I always use hospitals, and I use this in your work session, but for the purposes of explaining it to the public, I'll do the same thing. In one section of the code, it might say hospitals, and in another section of the code, it might say hospitals with emergency facilities. Well, we as staff recognize that emergency facilities are ancillary to a hospital and should be considered as part of that as a use, so we didn't want to treat it separately. So a major part of this effort was to go through the code and look at what the uses were and to see if we could make the nomenclature uniform across the entire board. The amended language would eliminate chapter 16.24, which is the office retail zone from the code. Currently, we don't have any properties within the city that are zoned office retail. And the fourth amendment would be to clarify how residential uses are treated on commercially zoned properties. Currently, they can either be permitted to a planned unit development or permitted to a conditional use process, and then that goes into whether or not they're subject to a general design standard as to whether or not they need to be located above or behind the commercial use, and our recommendation, or the Planning Commission's recommendation is that they be permitted outright within the commercial zones that they're currently permitted in, provided that they meet the stipulation that's currently in the retail commercial and general commercial zones that reads, "The residential portion of a mixed use can be considered clearly secondary to commercial uses and mixed use developments when traffic trips generated, dedicated parking spaces, signage, and the road frontage of residential uses are all exceeded by that of the commercial component, and the commercial portion of the site is located primarily on the ground floor." So what this does is it makes sure that in the commercial zones, when you're allowing a mixed-use residential product, which is a good thing, that it's secondary to the commercial use, so we don't have people going into the commercial uses and just, I mean, the commercial zones and developing all residential. By making it a permitted use, it eliminates process for some of the developers, which also encourages this type of development. It doesn't require that they go through a process, provided that they meet that stipulation, and they would still be subject to the same standards, commercial design review, or commercial design standards, the site development standards, any other standards in our code, that they would be under the other processes. And finally, the amended language would provide for a use classification system. Under chapter 16.88, we have a similar uses section that talks about, gives the director the ability to make a determination of whether or not a use is similar to another use for the purposes of deciding whether or not it's appropriate for that zone. What we did was we expanded on that and went through a, and this is very common in a lot of other codes, we said, these are the characteristics that are associated with commercial-type uses, and you list general uses under that, and you might define some of those uses as to what they mean, and it allows, excuse me, it provides staff with a guidepost, so to speak, that says, okay, I'm a widget manufacturer, I don't know what that is, it's probably some type of manufacturing, they can explain to us what it is that they do, and we can find out what the best use is, and we can use that as a guide in making that decision. We tested this language in September of last year on 132 businesses, primarily on Twelton Sherwood Road and Pacific Highway, and we found that there were, one of the goals and objectives of that was to make sure that we weren't creating any non-conforming uses by this language, and of the 132 businesses surveyed, 12 of the businesses would not, or 12 of the uses would not be permitted. Some of those uses were no longer there. There was a crematorium over in the light industrial district, where we don't specifically list crematoriums as a use in our development code. They would be considered either non-conforming or unlisted uses, and they would require determination. There was a residential use in an industrial zone, so there were 12, but they were pre-existing non-conforming, they were already there, they were already non-conforming. Our code didn't make, our revised code did not, did not make them any more less conforming, if that makes sense. We mailed out 418 ballot measure, a ballot measure, 56 notices to the businesses. I've met on several occasions and fielded several phone calls from some, a lot of business owners about what this language does and what it means for their business, and I think it's probably reflected by the number of folks here. I didn't get a lot of people, once I explained to them what it was we were doing and gave them an opportunity to go look at the language and call me back if they had any further questions. I didn't get a lot of callbacks. I think that they were perfectly fine with the language. I would have loved to have provided some flashbang PowerPoint for you to explain this better, but I think it's pretty dry. I don't know that it would have done any good for you, and I hope that you have had a chance to take a look at this information, and I'm available for questions should you have any.
Great. Thank you, Brad. Again, certainly appreciate the hard work the staff and the Planning Commission and the community have had on this. Questions for Brad from counsel before we open up for public testimony? Counselor?
So, Brad, the 12 non-conforming businesses, they are in a, you know, essence grandfathered end, they won't be required to do anything to meet.
Not, not necessarily. I mean, there's different classifications of non-conformities. Some of them might be illegal non-conformities, uses that have gone in after implementation of the code that probably warrant some type of enforcement. I, I did not look at and classify those. I did not look at and classify those nonconformities myself. I just looked at them, okay, they're existing today, they've either been permitted or they've went in and they're considered nonconforming, but they would not be allowed. If they came in to me and asked me today, "Can I put my business here?", we would have to say, "No, that's a non, it's not a use that's permitted in the zone."
And that was the same case yesterday?
Prior to the language, correct?
Yeah, okay.
I have a question.
Counselor?
So, I guess what I'm hearing you say is unless it requires change or forced confirmation, is it a complaint-driven code then?
We have complaint-driven enforcement, we have one enforcement officer, so it is complaint-driven.
For nonconformity?
Yes, ma'am.
So, there is another, if they don't come in and they just go in, unless somebody in their area says, "This seems like an odd use for this," they would not receive notification that there's an issue, is that correct?
Complained, or staff observes, they go out and they see the, "Hey, there's a new business that's opened up," and it's like, "Oh, hey, that's not a use that's permitted in that zone, then we can go out and," I mean, it's, it is primarily a complaint-driven enforcement proceedings, but if staff observes something that's not supposed to be happening, we should do something about it, and that's what we're...
So, the remedy for the person, is there an appeal process if that were to happen?
We would have to start enforcement proceedings, which would mean that we would have to open up some type of investigation, figure out what it is that they're doing wrong, and give them options, and, you know, if it's, if it's a rendering plant in a commercial zone or a residential zone, it's probably not going to be allowed, and we're going to tell them that it's not a allowed use, and you gotta cease and desist that use and move your business to a more appropriate location. And I'll say that we oftentimes at the counter get folks come in and say, "Hey, I want to put something here, I want to put a use here that isn't appropriate in that zone," and we will direct them to locations where their use is more appropriate. And we try and work with folks, and in the same sense, we would do that with somebody that if we discovered that they were a nonconforming use, they came in or they had enforcement proceedings going against them, we would try and help them figure out a location where their business was appropriate. It's not our purpose to just go in and kick them out.
So, what I hear you saying to Counselor Butterfield and the rest of us, though, is that the 12 nonconforming would have been nonconforming before this code?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other comments before we have public testimony? Okay, we will, reserves, council always has the right to ask more questions, but we'll let folks who have signed up give testimony. First, our clause.
Sylvia, can I get that form like you please? Put this in there. I didn't probably come in.
For this? Okay.
Can we do it in a minute?
This is your opportunity to testify, so.
Now, tell me where that takes me, Mr. Ellsner. Am I banned from public speaking? I won't agree to content control.
Mr. Claus, chair has the right to enforce the rules of the council and of the hearing. If he or she determines, regardless of your content, that is disrupting the proceedings of the council and their deliberations, he can ask you to stop so that they can conduct, because this is merely, this is a business meeting, and they're allowed to conduct their business. It has nothing to do with the content, it has everything to do with how they're, with the fact of the...
Then tell me what they look at and start from there. If it's no content, it's clearly not time and place matter. You've already got time, you've got four minutes. You've got manner that you have to sit here and speak.
Did you sign, did you sign the form?
Now, the question is, you determine if it's character or not, it's comment. At character, all you've got to do is tell me tonight that you can't, you're going to determine what character comments are, and if the chair has that right, then I don't agree to it, and you're banning my speech in this meeting, and I'm just asking you to do it, Keith.
I'll advise the council to do this. If the council wants to allow Mr. Claus to speak, he can speak. That doesn't necessarily mean the council has to sit there and listen to it. The council can allow Mr. Claus to speak, and you can... The only people who have to stay here are possibly Sylvia, because she's keeping her record, and me. So, allow Mr. Claus to speak, if you don't want to listen to it, you're not compelled.
So, make your choice, Brad.
Your time is rolling, you can use it how you wish.
My time is not rolling, you've not answered the question, are you going to control content or not, Keith? And that's a very simple question, I've been looking for that opportunity for a long time, solid versus New York Times, absolutely no forgiveness for that, and what you're doing is going back from the Abrams ruling, and I can't sit up here and make a comment, because if I make a comment about certain things in this, you're going to say it's on the character of this rather than the word product.
Now, you're making assumptions.
Mr. Claus, why don't you present?
Because a public testimony for citizen comment and public testimony and public testimony for an ordinance, in my opinion, are completely different.
I can't hear you. That's your fault, incidentally, for not having a listening device here, which is not a federal violation. You know you're supposed to have one for people who are here, and there are certain towns I can't hear. There's nothing I can do about it, I had to come in here and have a listening device, and it's not here.
Did you?
If I ask you to speak up, it is not discourtesy, it's simply trying to understand what you're saying.
I totally understand.
Well, if you understand, where's the listening device?
Did you ask for one when you came in this morning, or this evening?
No, I mean, look, they normally have them up there, they didn't have it here, and the meeting was started when I got here by about 60 seconds.
Well, I'm sorry, you did not ask for one earlier, but...
I don't think I have to ask, I think it has to be available, but that's another matter, we'll determine that in another form. What I'm getting to is, what is character comment? Is it work product, or are you making that determination?
Mr. Claus, as I stated, citizen comment and comment on an ordinance, in my opinion, are two different, very, two different things, and you've had your four minutes.
I mean, if he wants to, if he wants to speak, let him speak, and on whatever he wants to speak on, I mean, at least really... Now, it has to be directed, now this is, in fact, a time, place, and manner, because you're being asked to speak as to the matter that's before the council. So, I do, that's what it's about. I mean, you have an opportunity, if you want to present your other testimony, I guess the council can...
Well, I don't, because I've just been told, Mr. Ellsner, my time is gone, or is it back now?
There it is, it's back, talk.
Oh, wonderful. All right, on your chapter 1636, if you look at this, you will see repeatedly you do not have definitions of certain things. For instance, recreational vehicles, you do not have defined in your code, period. Now, the state law defines that one way, and you at various times define it multiple ways. The problem with that is really very simple, you don't know what zoning rights you have. I can, there's question after question in this ordinance, that's written in all of the ordinances, where you have terms that don't mean anything. Take, for instance, restaurants. Restaurants have four standard definitions in the industry. I'm sorry, they just do. Anyone who works in it knows that. You have a new definition of restaurants, one I've never seen before, and it's not complete. Now, that leads to a problem. How can you get due process or equal treatment, one a fifth problem, the other a 14th, when you don't know how to respond to the language in the code? You go to definitions, you can't find it. Your sign code is difficult. You have one definition of signs in another place in the code, and then you're treating signs differently in another place. The problem is, depending upon the time of day you get in, is the treatment you're going to get. The problem is, and if you talk to an ex-mayor like Walton Hitt Scott, he says, "No, no, 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 that's not the way we define that language. It didn't go through a public hearing, now we find similar language." I've tried to mark this, for instance, historic resources. How do you define a historic resource? The state has one way, the federal has another, and to my knowledge, we don't have any way at all. So, that's going to go to a staff person. If you're going to try to keep simplifying this, at least give us something so we know what we're dealing with. The problem with all of this is fraternal lodges, right up above you, it said, "Has to be open to everyone." Fraternal lodges automatically aren't open to everyone. That may cause a big surprise to you, but that's why they have memberships. You can't walk in there. Place after place, you've got inclusive language, then exclusive language. Now, here's your problem, and I'm sure Mr. Ellsner knows this as well as I do, the most restrictive language in the code holds. You can't say, "Well, today, I prefer to use all, although I never meant that. Now, I know these fraternal clubs don't allow that, but I'll ignore that." The problem is, if you keep doing it, you've got financial insurance and real estate offices. What about title companies? That's one of your major features, it's not included in the uses. You either have to break your code down and change it, or you're going to run into repeatedly the same problem. You're going to get upset with someone's speech, then you're going to say, the way our President Wood and Wilson do its bad tendencies, then the students are going to look at it and say, "We don't like that," and they're going to give you Sullivan's and New York Times. That's going to bring you back to due process and equal treatment. I defy anybody to tell me what some of these definitions mean. You do not even have mass merchandisers defined in this code. And you have toy stores? Walmart sells more toys than any other company, and you'll learn that. What are they, toy store? Look at your own definitions, and part of the problem is you can't sit down with the staff because our learned attorney over here issued gag orders, you try to write something, it's ignored, and then you come here and you find yourself in content restriction. Notice how fast he backed off of that? I'd like to add, "Get me out of here for content restriction." These are some comments for what they're worth, not that anybody will read them.
Eugene Stewart? Welcome, Eugene.
Eugene Stewart, 22595, Southwest Pine, Sherwood, Oregon. One of the things that bothers me a little bit is that when the comprehensive plan was originally brought up, in part two, you had a lot of goals and policies. This particular revision of your ordinance doesn't reference any of your goals and policies. So, you're changing your laws, but you haven't gone back to look at your policies, goals and policies, to see if they should be revamped. So, are you following your goals and policies? Have you looked at that? I'm not sure, I can't see. I glanced at it briefly, I'm sorry, I should have taken more time, but I didn't have time. But I still feel that goal one was not followed, and you do not address, I believe, in this revision, how you follow goal one. I noticed in others you have put it in there, but I don't see it this time. I didn't notice it in your packet, it may be there, and if I overlooked it, I'm sorry, but I did not see it. So, I think you need to sit down, and I will agree with Mr. Claus, is that it appears we're doing so many changes, we don't know how it's affecting one part to the other. We have no clear vision of what our comprehensive plan is anymore. I think we've lost sight of some of our goals, and I admit, some of the goals and policies probably do need to be changed, but should those not have been addressed first before we started changing all the ordinances? I don't know, I think we have not done the best job, and I know staff is trying, and I also know the Planning Commission is trying, but I think we need maybe a little bit more leadership on getting more public input and involvement in this process. I think people do not come down here, number one, you know, a couple public get-togethers does not give a group of people a chance to get together to try to formulate any opinion and present it to the, first to the Planning Commission, then come down here and present it to you. Most of this is all staff-driven, they do a good job, they try to do a good job, but by not reaching out to the people and trying to get their opinions in, in a more organized way, I think we're losing some good ideas out there amongst the general public. And, so, I don't know, it's just, like on the IP, originally IP was not allowed in any zone, it was a, you had to do a zone change anytime you needed to use IP. Now, it's a conditional use in any zone. As an example, last month, you had a hearing to change an IP zone back to residential. Well, if that hadn't have been just, somebody thought they needed this much, so they zoned it IP, then you had to, those people had to go back through all the expense of getting it back to its original zoning, whereas if you just made any IP a zone map change, then no matter where, then you can decide where to put it, and I think it would be maybe a little bit more effective. That was what our thought was when we originally created the IP zone, and why we did not include it as a, any zone, anyplace there, you had to, if a church was going to build here, then they had to apply for an IP zone change, and that seemed to work pretty good, and I think that should be considered. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. I'm sorry you didn't hear, or I'll repeat, staff's report that we're here today after an 18-month process, which the Planning Commission is our advisory group of the community to hear from folks and staff, did reach out to almost 150 businesses and multiple notices. So, thanks, Jean.
Yep.
No, your time is up. Thank you. Jerry Surgeon?
Gary.
Gary, apologize, Gary. Welcome.
Attorney, thank you. Gary Surgeon, 5257, Southwest Newman Place, Wallington, Oregon.
Okay, thank you. Do I need to repeat that?
No, you're fine.
Okay, good. Okay, I'm just, I'm a retail commercial broker, working with the Albertsons and the Safeway Center here in Sherwood. We have a new retailer that was coming to town, Petco is an unleashed concept, smaller concept of Petco, so I'm here really to testify in communication with Brad, to testify in support of the proposed changes to the zoning, allowing pet grooming and boarding as an outright permitted use in a retail store, and these are incidental uses. This proposed store at the Safeway Center is 4,500 square feet, the grooming will be, you know, approximately 300 square feet. There's no, there's no boarding scheduled at this point, and it would be, as Brad and I talked about, would be inside only, but there's nothing that they have in their, in their concept at this point, so it's just to overcome, to try to get this deal done, move forward and fill space, pet grooming and boarding, and I think we've already talked about the self-service dog washing, which will be a portion of it too, is already a permitted use, so just testifying in favor of those changes.
And in general, when you reviewed it, are you supportive of the overall effort that staff and the Planning Commission did on the proposed ordinance?
That would be yes.
Great.
That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else like to give testimony on this proposed ordinance? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing and invite Brad back up.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Brad?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you do me a favor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just eat that microphone?
I could have had a life with...
All right, so questions of, Brad, do you want to give any?
There were three items that I wanted to speak to. One, Mr. Claus talked about...
Just grab that mic and put it...
Mr. Claus talked about definitions, and I would suggest that you look at 1610010, specifically the second paragraph, which states, "Where terms are not defined, they shall have their ordinarily accepted meanings within the context with which they are used." And then it refers to Webster's Third New International Dictionary for guidance. So I think that you have to give your staff some deference to make those interpretations of those uses based on these as guideposts, and then we're trying to make that even more clear by adding the language to 16.88188, because we're never going to be able to define every term in this code, and everybody's going to have their own idea of what something Jean Stewart had spoke about goal one. We did look at the goals, and goal one was specifically addressed on page 99 of the packet, and we did not do any substantive changes to this language that would, in our mind, warrant going back and revisiting the comprehensive plan policies and objectives. And then, I guess I only had the two points, and I guess the third point would be to ask if you have any other questions.
Great, thank you, Brad. Questions for Brad that come up, or counsel?
So Brad, I just want to confirm that over the last 18 months, we had several opportunities for the public to comment?
Yes, sir, and I assume that it's not always easy for people to come down here and testify at the planning commission, and I also assume that a lot of people don't get involved in a process until it specifically affects something that they're trying to do, and I understand that. I think that we do a really good job of trying to reach out to folks, whether they agree with our methods or not. The planning commission on multiple occasions has asked for other ideas on ways that we can get the public involved. I mean, I think we had a desert in discussion, we've had open houses, we've, we have an open-door policy, people are always welcome to come in and talk to us about things, and I think, you know, we can establish another committee or another committee to do further review, but I agree with you. I think that the planning commission is there for a reason. These are folks that want to serve the public, and they do their best. So I think we've done as good a job as we can, and there's always room for improvement, and I think through the use of, you know, social media and technology, we'll eventually get to a point where people can, somebody will always have something to say about our outreach.
Thanks, Brad. Any other questions for Brad? Counselor?
This is a lot of information, and it's all, you know, organized very neatly in chapters with lots of tables, and I just wanted to ask a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So when we have a potential business or development that wants to come to town, they may already own a lot and want to build something on that lot, or they may have a business that they own, like a franchise or the gentleman from Twalton who's representing Petco. So when I look at the code, like, an example would be on page 142 over a packet, under light industrial, general industrial, and employment industrial, it says manufactured home sales are not allowed, or not, I'm not sure, not permitted.
Right.
So, obviously...
Not outright permitted.
Yeah, not outright. So I'm just trying to, for those people who may be watching, and for my own education, if somebody comes in and has a business that is in one of those NNN columns, for example, the, sorry.
That's okay.
That use...
Junkyard salvage yards?
Well, manufactured home yards is not permitted, despite the fact that general industrial zone, the minimus, the minimal lot size or contiguous area would be 50 acres. I mean, where else would you put a manufactured home sales site? So what I want to know is if somebody comes to town and either owns a piece of property they want to put a business in that's not zoned for that outright, and/or they represent an industry that we don't permit, how does somebody open up a dialogue with staff on, you know, helping them find another location, or potentially making a zone change request, even though it looks like we've done a pretty good job of listing everything out?
It's just that, we will, I mean, obviously, some of these decisions were made well before I got here on what uses would be allowed where, because we didn't really go in and mess with that a lot.
Right.
Yeah, we would, specifically, they'd come in, we'd ask them, can you explain to us exactly what the nature of your business is, if they already own the property? It kind of puts them in a little bit more of a difficult situation. Most businesses coming in to relocate, I don't believe, own the property. They'll, they'll go through their due diligence and find out where the best location for them to open are. If we don't have a location within the city for that type of use, I regularly contact Twalton, and Twalton planners contact us to see if we have, you know, acreage here for certain types of uses and things that they may not want in their community, and whether or not they're allowed here. So, you know, we do the best that we can to direct them into the appropriate locations. If they want to locate in the city of Sherwood, and it's not a use that's permitted here, then our recommendation to them is to go through a zone change, or a code amendment to try and make their case before you, the decision-makers, the planning commission first, and then the city council, to decide, because we don't ultimately make that decision, it's your code, we just administer it, whether or not that use is appropriate. So they make their case, and staff will write a report on the use and what we think the impacts are on that, and then it'll be up to you ultimately to decide whether or not you think it's appropriate for that zone. So there is a process for them to go through. It's a legislative process, or, I mean, depends on if you're applying it to the entire zone or a specific piece of property. In this case, you would have to apply it to the entire zone.
Okay. One other, the other example, as I'm trying to educate myself, was the difference between automotive, boat, trailer, and recreational vehicle storage, which is not permitted in...
What page?
Commercial. It's in 133 of our packet, or page four of, I'm on the red, I'm on your red line, so copy, so I don't know.
I'll go to your packet.
133 at the top, automotive, boat, trailer, and recreational storage, no, 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 or not permitted. And then if you turn to...
For the commercial zone.
Yeah, the commercial zone. And then under industrial, we have mini warehousing or self-storage, not permitted, permitted, and not permitted. So mini warehousing doesn't always come with recreational storage, does it?
Correct.
So I guess I'm wondering, how do we, how does the zone, because storage is becoming a very big business?
It is, and I would, I guess, argue on one point that you might, if it's personal mini storage that is the primary use, and you have an area for recreational vehicle storage, in the same sense that the Petco, for example, they're generally a retail use, so the majority of that 4,500 square foot space is going to be used for retail uses.
Sure.
They have 300 square feet where they want to put in self-serve dog washes. In my mind, those are ancillary uses to that primary use.
Sure.
And we would treat them as such. As long as the primary use is a listed use in here, that's what we would try and regulate the use on. Specific to storage, I agree, it's not, it's not specifically clear in here, and...
If we do allow vehicle recreational, or, sorry, back to my other, automotive, boat, recreational, trailer, does the land have to be improved?
Yes.
And does it have to be identified at the beginning before they get their permits?
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't issue a permit without understanding what the use is on the property. So if it was a primary, if the primary use was boat storage, RV storage, or something like that, then we would not permit it if it wasn't a permitted use in the zone. If it's mini storage and people rent a garage space within that mini storage, or a space within that mini storage, just store, we don't, there are certain things, like we don't want hazardous chemicals and things stored in those mini storage, but really, it's not, and that again becomes an enforcement issue, because we don't know what folks are out there storing.
Right.
But I can put a boat in one of those garages, or I can put an RV in one of those garages, so...
Or what's draining off of those vehicles?
Correct.
Right.
And I would say to that end, I mean, what's draining out of there, I mean, we try and capture that and treat it through our store of quality, through the improvements of paving, and, you know, we specifically ask the owners to identify what actually is going to, how that business is expected to operate, and what they would foresee coming in for the storage.
Okay.
If they came in and said, well, we're just going to store recreational vehicles, and it's in a zone that doesn't permit recreational vehicle storage, then we would say no. Because if they said, we're going to put in a mini storage, then, and somebody stores recreational vehicles in there, and it's not the primary use, I would consider it an ancillary use. Obviously, the goal is to make sure that the primary use is the mini storage as opposed to recreational vehicle storage.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Other questions of Brad? Joe, what do you think of the proposed, the proposal from the planning commission?
I'm generally supportive.
Very. I understand the planning commission, you've spent many, many months on this as well, so this is potentially the end of a very long process, that, as you said, we can always improve in trying to get public input, but a lot of work's gone into this. The question you asked earlier, if we discover something down the line, after, assuming you approve this, that is unintended consequence, you can always come back and change it, so... So generally, I'm very supportive, and I know a lot of work went into this, both staff time and planning commission, so...
Thank you, Joe. Paul, any, any comment?
I think Joe sums it up. I mean, your acting is a legislative body in this particular instance, and if you do find it a piece of legislation that you adopt, you want to alter it at some future point, you're allowed to, and, you know, with the ammunition that Tom gave you earlier, you know, there may have to be some, you know, temporal constraints placed on that, and you have to give certain notice requirements, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you're kind of, this is somehow embedded in concrete or embedded in stone. So you can always alter it if it turns out that there's an unintended consequence, so...
Great. Thank you, Paul. Certainly by the fact, the extensive outreach to our business community, and the response when it came to the city council, my opinion did a great job, planning commission did a great job.
Thank you.
Any discussion from counsel on the proposed ordinance? Or a motion to read caption and adopt?
I'll move the read caption adopt. 20011.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded? So, yeah?
Ordinance 2012-011, annulled some many sections of the zoning and community development code, including divisions two and four relating to commercial, industrial, and institutional and public use classifications. Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Langer?
Aye.
Counselor Butterfield?
Aye.
Counselor Folsom?
Aye.
Counselor Henderson?
Aye.
Counselor President Grant?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad, thank you, staff, thank you, counsel. City manager report.
Mayor and counsel. I'm going to get used to this mic, I'm used to it being on, sorry. Mayor and counsel, I have three items I wanted to share, both with the council and with the public who may be watching. One, I want to commend our police department, and you may have heard, we've been having child safety seat clinics here for a number of years, but they have received a designation from both ODOT and a group called the Alliance for Community Traffic Safety in Oregon, and we've been designated an official child safety seat distribution center. So I think the efforts that Chief Growth and his staff have done in the past, this is now kind of a higher level. They've acknowledged the success that we've had. There are lots of children in this community, and I think safety in terms of their child safety seats is an important item. So we're going to have another child safety seat clinic on Saturday, August 18th, from 10:00 AM to noon, at the police department. You may recall back in April, we had 43 attendees, and we checked 32 seats, so that's something I want to make sure that folks know, it's a service that will be available here in Sherwood, and you don't have to go elsewhere to get those seats checked. Chief, do you have anything else on that at all, that I'm missing?
If folks want to come Saturday, they need to show up early. We routinely have to turn people away, just because there's too many cars to get to in the amount of time. So show up early. If you don't make it, you can have it done by appointment as well. We can do it anytime that a technician is working, so...
Excellent.
And information on that service is on our website, so you can always go to our website to get the information. The second item, and Counselor Clark may want to talk about the event itself, but we had, the Sherwood community had the Relay for Life this past weekend on a very hot day, and for the first time, the city of Sherwood had a team participate in that event. We had 20-plus staff sign up and over 30 participants, and I want to applaud Karen Brown, who was our team captain, did a great job. We kind of got into this very late, so I think we learned a lot, and we're excited about participating next year, it was a great event. I'll let Counselor Clark maybe talk a little bit more about the event itself, but I was very impressed as a newcomer to Sherwood about this event. So, counselor, did you have anything?
Yes, as always, it was a wonderful event, and it was great to be on the first city of Sherwood team. And I have to say that during my proclamation, when I stated that we had our first city of Sherwood team, everyone applauded. So the community embraced the fact that we were very much in support of them, and so it was, it was a great, great event. It was 102, and so the silent auction area was a little bit of a challenge, because they had a lot of the wine uncorking itself, due to the great heat, and they were going around to all of the baskets that had the cellophane wrapped around them and cutting them, because they were causing them to be tense of heat, and sort of melting and distorting the things that were inside of the baskets, and so it was a little bit of a challenge, but you know what? Relayers are definitely people who are up for a challenge, and one of the things that someone commented to me, Amber Gardner commented, that next year, when relay comes around, we want people to know that you do not have to run the relay. The relay has nothing to do with batons, or running in any way. We're there to support cancer research and walk in remembrance of those that we have lost, and keep the ball rolling on the research to keep those who have been diagnosed having a hope for a cure. So with that, it was, it was wonderful.
Counselor, I know I walked. Do you walk, or do you run?
Yes, I did. I know, I walked, because it was 11:00 to noon was my time, and it was...
Already hot, then?
Yes, it, yes, at the kickoff time at 10:00, it was already 91. So, so, yeah, we walked, and then I walked at midnight, which was much cooler.
Very smart.
That was my shift. Midnight was a much better shift, so, but it was a wonderful event, and as a newcomer to this community, I was quite amazed. It's only been the seventh year, I believe.
Eighth year.
And I know the numbers will change, but I checked the website, and close to $70,000 were raised already, just here in Sherwood, so, and I know cancer's touched pretty much everybody in some way, so it was a very special event, and I'm glad the city participated. The other, last item, I just want to remind folks, there's two activities that are ongoing, the summer music series on Wednesday nights at Stella Olson, there's a couple more coming up, and those have been well-attended, and I think country music's next week, and tomorrow night is salsa funk, or something like that, so, anyway, it's a great event, the community's been coming out and enjoying those. And then this Friday, the movies start in a little bit different location than in the past. I think the movies have been at Stella Olson, and this year, we've partnered with Main Streets, and we're going to have it in our new Cannery Square location this Friday night is the first... movie, so...
Called Flicks on the Plaza.
Yes. Flicks on the Plaza.
Flicks on the Plaza.
So I will be there with my two young kids, watching, I don't know what the movie is this Friday.
Over the Hedge.
Over the Hedge. So, and it is a good one. I've seen it already. But I want to invite the community out to come out Friday night, and enjoy, hopefully, a nice night, not too hot, and to see a movie here in Old Town. So, any questions for me, or for the city staff?
Council announcements. Kudos to city staff for their role in all of our summer events. And last month was, they helped out certainly with Robinhood Festival. Congratulations to our Robinhood Festival Association for a great, great festival. Everybody had a great, great time. And I'm very curious, Washington County Visitor Association had a professional pollster survey crew to find out just where everyone comes from, who comes to our event. And that, those results are going to be really exciting to see. And, yeah, a lot of fun, great weather. I think we had a great, you'll talk about Friday, I'm sure, which is great. Oz, I've heard great things, and I think we'll have some comment on that. Last week was the end of a 10-day stretch by, almost every year, but we didn't have it last year for, because of the tragedies in Japan. But about every year, we have 18 to 20 Japanese students that come to Sherwood, middle and high school students that come and experience the greenery, and the low humidity, and the beauty of Oregon. And we had 20, they do the tour of the city, they go to Y, they go to one of us, to Living Facilities, they do work in the community, and then they do some tourist stuff and some shopping, which the students love. And they stay with 10 families here in Sherwood that host, usually two, two students. And great, great event. And I went to their giveaway dinner, and the mayor of Adwala, Japan, which is a small suburb of Tokyo, 500,000 people, they gave the city of Sherwood this decorative sport mallet, which we'll put on display somewhere in City Hall, but to let councilor see it, see it, and the community see it. It's very nice. A dragon, and then it looks like dogwood blossoms on a branch on the back. So very nice. For anybody that has had an exchange student for 10 days, or for part of a year, or have been a student that did an exchange, would agree that it's a profound effect on everyone's life. And the kids had a great time, the families that hosted, those relationships will last forever, even though they were only together for 10 days. So if you're interested in hosting exchange students, or being an exchange student, contact City Hall, and we'll help connect you with people that do that.
That'd be nice, purple, by the way.
Because it's a lot of, a lot of fun. And I'm sure you have some other stuff, but I'll let others chime in. Counselor?
I first wanted to congratulate the Sherwood Cultural Arts Commission. They have been, I'm the liaison, and they have been very forward-thinking this year in trying to network all of the wonderful groups in our community. And because of some joint meetings that we've had with the nonprofits in the community, and the associations like the Robinhood Festival, we came up with the idea of Flicks on the Plaza. And Main Street was very excited about it, has taken that ball and just run. They are planning lots of booths and tents and pre-show entertainment that will be just fabulous and very fun for all ages. I also wanted to congratulate the Cultural Arts Commission, because they also were, Elise Vordermark, our vice chair, wrote the grant for the Royal Academy, which was part of the Robinhood Festival. And that is going to be a wonderful addition. The grant that we received from the Oregon Arts Commission is called Arts Build Community. I have to say, that is exactly what that event did. It was really quite exciting to see the number of volunteers. We had over 30 volunteers come down, help with the children's arts and booths, that we did, the activities that we did. We did visual painting, postcards, or trading cards. And Darla Boljat came up with that idea, and Elise ran the booth. And it was just really fun to see the kids get to experience different forms of art with their entire family for a very affordable price. And I'm wearing the shirt tonight in honor of the Royal Academy and True Love's Tale, the cast that was so fabulous. But because we partnered with so many different groups, the Robinhood Festival Association knew what we were doing and how we were doing it. And so Susan, and she was here earlier from the festival, got some of our cast on TV, on Good Morning Oregon, or Good Day Oregon, and, as well as the archery. And it was really a fun thing that Friday before the Robinhood Festival. So that was, I just really appreciate the vision and forward-thinking of the Cultural Arts Commission as becoming a hub, and creating the synergy between the groups and the communities, so that we're all stronger, and becoming more unified, and seeing opportunities of networking where we haven't always in the past. So I appreciate just the opportunity to acknowledge their work and their volunteerism. They also helped host with the Sherwood Foundation for the Arts, the two very successful Missoula camps, the Summer Cinderella and Hansel and Gretel, in which, you know, approximately 100 children were involved, and very successful events. I was able to attend one, and it was, as always, just hilarious and very fun. I'm also the senior center liaison, and we are forming a new committee to continue to look forward and make sure we can maintain a strong, an active senior center. But I also have to mention that we have hired a new director on a permanent basis, our interim director, Teresa. And I want to say, is it Cockins? Is that the last name? Eugene, is that her last name? Because I've emailed her, but I know it's Teresa.
Just Teresa.
Just Teresa. But she is quite wonderful. The seniors have a great connection to her, and we are very excited for her permanency in our facility. And she is a great asset to the community. And I encourage you to, if you have time, volunteer at the senior center. There's a lot of fun things happening there. So that's my deal.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Henderson?
I just would like to thank city staff for all, for their partnership and assistance while we did the Wizard of Oz. I called on Joe a couple of times when we had some, there's...
Surprises.
Surprises, yeah. I always say, there's never if, there's only when. And we had two wasps' nests down in the green room, so...
Perfect spot.
Yeah, well, you know, and it was hot. And so he came down and took care of that. And we had some issues with the bathrooms and the locks. And everybody was extremely responsive, and I'm grateful and humbled by their prompt attention to our project. When I know they have many, including Craig Sheldon's group, many, many other, you know, projects and priorities to get to every day. I'm sure for them, it's not a matter of if, it's only when. And this, this run of the musical, while it wasn't as well-attended as last year's show, I got, we received 100 times over more comments through our website about the charm of our town, about how the event is run, about, we even had Officer Drummond come down one night and just check in with folks. And just the beautiful asset that we have in Stella Olson, and the stage cover that the Cultural Arts Commission and the Parks Board, you know, combined to bring to our community. And, I mean, it was, usually we get complaints, as a lot of people do. But this year, it was a welcome...
Outstanding.
To receive comments about, wow, I've never been to Sherwood, and I had no idea you would put on, you know, a show of this quality in a beautiful setting, where, except for the one gentleman who wants porta-potties down in the park. But, so thank you to staff, and not only Kristen, but Jennifer and Craig Sheldon's group for helping us put on that event and bring, not, you know, an event not only for our residents, but for people who come to visit Sherwood, and then hopefully will come back to see more of what we do. And clearly, you know, our summer schedule is so, so busy.
Sharp and heat.
Right. But we do so many things, including the Royal Academy, which I attended. And I had forgotten how beautiful a setting it is down there when you get down there, and you see that greenery, and the beautiful area that we have down there. So I just want to express my thanks for all my needful week.
You bet. We're having a great summer.
Yes.
As a community. Other announcements from councilors? Counselor?
I too would like to thank the Public Works Department for preparing for our season of soccer and football and lacrosse. We have over 3,750 kids playing in those sports this year. And Craig's crew has done a great job preparing those fields and getting them ready for the season. So kudos to you, Craig.
Here, here. Thanks, Counselor. Any other announce? Yep?
If you missed Oz, it was a marvelous event. And the setting was beautiful down there at Stella Olson. Everybody that was involved in putting that together really deserves an applause. Everybody from mowing the grass all the way up to the lion. It was incredible. If you haven't already ordered your pavers, Sherwood Main Street still has those for sale, and their office is located in the back of the Chamber Office. And you might have seen in the Gazette, I think Ray Pitts might have done the article, but Jen Vanazan, one of our very active citizens in the community, is struggling in a big battle with cancer right now. And there's going to be a run to benefit her and her family coming up here soon. So you'll see more about that in the media and whatnot.
Well, I knew I had something else, and I forgot. It was already, kind of, it was announced in the Oregonian last week, but certainly Sherwood has benefited yet again from our great regional and county partners, and that they've dedicated, pledged over 37 million in road projects in our community in the next five years. Very exciting. We had, we had a priority list, and the top four all got funded. And when you consider the county only allocated 43 million in Roy Rogers District, and we got 37 that benefits Sherwood, we had some home runs, to say the least. And the first one will be the Twolton-Sherwood Road, which we talked about earlier, and that was in the Gazette, hopefully to begin next year. And we also did learn that we did not receive the federal grant that we were pursuing to get some more sidewalks on Highway 99. That was unfortunate, only one project would receive a grant at the federal level this cycle. And I went to a project in Lane County. But there are other avenues that we continue to pursue to get that project funded by others, as well as under crossings and other things that we're pursuing. So, all good stuff. I think that's the collective good for the group. And we are going to adjourn this meeting and go to an Urban Renewal Advisory Board meeting in one minute.